I hereby call to order the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for Wednesday, July 26, 2023. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Palatier?
Here.
Commissioner Marhol?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Lang?
Here.
Commissioner Matthews?
Here.
And Chairperson Huttigan?
Here.
We have a quorum. No one else is in attendance tonight, so we can move on to approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for June 28, 2023?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, please call the roll. Commissioner Palatier?
Yes.
Commissioner Marhol?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Commissioner Matthews?
Yes.
Chairperson Huttigan?
Yes.
All right. We have no one present in the audience to speak, which brings us to the liaison report. Anne, could you provide a village board update, please?
Thank you. During the last village board meeting, the policy for residential stormwater management permit incentive program was approved by the board. And I sent a copy of that to the commissioners prior to today's meeting. That's also available on the village website. But we discussed this during the last meeting, but just very briefly again, this is an incentive program to, for building permit fee credit, a one-time credit of up to $250 for the projects that are listed, that are eligible projects with the intention of improving stormwater runoff and flooding on residential properties. And the other board action that's relevant to the planning and zoning commission is a discussion of signs. Recently, there was a complaint about what I would describe as a feather flag, so a tall, vertical flag that was, there were a few in town, a couple in the B1 district on Harlem Avenue, and then a couple in the B2 district downtown. So the village sign ordinance prohibits signs that move or give the appearance of movement. So those would be prohibited signs. And the village board requested that, after discussing it during the last meeting, that the planning and zoning commission take a look at those regulations and consider whether those should apply possibly to different parts of the village differently, whether there should be some sort of exception to encourage small businesses in the village. So I'll be bringing that forward to the August meeting for the commission's consideration. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. There is no new business, which takes us to old business. Review of the 2024 draft work plan. If you're using the electronic packet, that starts on page 16. Anne, would you present that for us?
Sure. So I revised the draft 2024 work plan based on the discussion during our last meeting and put it, this is roughly the formatting that we're going to settle on for when it comes forward to the village board, just so you're familiar with it. I added 2023 accomplishments for your review, and obviously, that's to date. And then in the 2024 work plan, added the items that we discussed. And so I'm happy to take any revisions that you'd like. The one thing I'll note is that we may want to add a consideration of reviewing lighting standards or refining lighting standards. I don't think of this as maybe a wholesale review, but maybe to consider some special uses of lighting that may be especially nuisances to neighboring properties, motion sensor lights, and different types of security lighting that could be problematic to other neighbors. So we may want to take a look at some other communities and just refine the language in the ordinance, and that could be something that we would list separately, I believe, in the work plan, but that could be wrapped up in other revisions to the code, so we don't need to take that separately. It could be something that we discuss along with other revisions. But that's for your consideration, and at your direction, I'll make additional changes, and then hopefully, we can have a vote on this, and we'll have it before the village board.
All right. Any comments on the work plan?
I have suggestions for the first item under the 2024 work plan, and I sent them to Anne earlier today, but I could read them into the record. So that's the one that addresses the work we've been doing on impervious surface calculations. So I was thinking this could, what I'm proposing here might just make it a little bit more directive and tighter as to what we're doing. So is that okay? I just read in my?
Oh, yes.
All right. So that, again, it's the first item. So what I propose is something like, the bold head would be develop new impervious surface standards and calculations. And then under that, it would be assess Riverside's current rules and practices regarding impervious surface calculations and update them to ensure that Riverside uses consistent and accurate calculations of the permeability of different surface types with the goal of improving stormwater management on properties within Riverside. So I don't think that changes what our intent is. I think it just makes it a little bit more clear as to what we're working towards.
I would agree. I think that's clearer, more direct.
Yeah, it's sort of like what we're... And then I had just some minor comments on the third to the last item. Discuss decreasing the minimum 10-foot separation. The first comment is just in the body of it, the word separation should be after 10 foot. So it says a 10-foot separation is not required?
Yes.
And then in the third sentence, it says, "An example is the variation that was requested on Gatesby Road to replace an existing greenhouse." And as I recall, it wasn't to replace, it was to build some kind of a covered structure over a broken down part of the original wall. So, okay.
I think there was an old greenhouse there, right?
Isn't that where it was, like, just what they called the footer wall or something like that?
Yeah, that was what was left.
Yeah. So it wasn't to replace the greenhouse, it was just to cover the remnants.
To replace a formerly existing greenhouse.
It was to cover a formerly existing greenhouse. I don't think they were proposing to build a new one, they just wanted, they might do that in the future, but what they asked us for was a permission to have some kind of a covered structure to protect the brick. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments?
Just with respect to those changes, I agree. I would just say with the first one, I think we can lose the last part of the, whatever you, it's not the whole sentence, but the last part of the sentence when you said within Riverside, because I think that's, you know, as much as I'd like to impose my will on other communities, I'm not allowed to. And then the, that's funny you mention the greenhouse one, because I was, do we need an example here? Is that something we even need? It's just, at a certain level, it seems perfluous, and we don't, I don't think we really use examples. Well, we do have examples in other places, or in the last one, I guess, so I'm not really, I don't really care too much about that, but there just might be, I just am not sure it's necessary for kind of a bullet pointed list, which is all we have here.
I agree that we probably don't need examples, plus this is an unusual example to present, as opposed to like an accessory building or something.
Would it be like the lighting idea being included in the work plan?
Okay, great. So are we all in favor of the draft work plan with the changes to the two pervious surfaces and 10-foot building separation, as well as the addition of looking at lighting? Yes? Okay. All right.
Okay.
I think we can move forward with that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Now we have our discussion regarding front yard porches and decks in the Groveland-Lincoln-Kimbark area. This item starts on page six in the electronic packets. Anne?
Okay, thank you. So hopefully, this is helpful information, and assuming that you all had a chance to review it before the meeting, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions. But assuming you did, just a brief summary is that we've got some information here to provide some context for Groveland-Lincoln-Kimbark Forest and Pine areas, which was the original scope of what the village board asked us to look at. And this should provide some idea of the number of single-family homes, those without porches, those that could add a front porch, given the architecture of the house, which is subjective, to be fair. And then for those properties where, that don't have a porch that could add it, what is the average distance in feet between the foundation of the house and the property line, and then the foundation of the house and the sidewalk, just to give you some context for spacing. And then we have below that table, a typical distance between the property line and the closest edge of the sidewalk. So you can see that varies by area and by side of street. So I think the meat of this, I would say, is that the, in, of the 16 homes that could add a porch, you know, three could add a, there are some properties basically where you would add a five-foot porch to those properties if they wanted to add it, and end up with a very small distance between the, between that front of the porch and the sidewalk, which may not be desirable. So for example, at 40 Kimbark Road, the distance between the porch and the property line would be 3.7 feet, and the distance between the porch and sidewalk would be 10 feet. So those are, you know, that's an example maybe where you're not maintaining that front yard aesthetic, which may not be desirable. But anyway, that's an overview of the data. And other community standards, some communities do have standards for porch encroachments. Of those that do, generally, a five-foot wide porch is what they specify. Some, you know, say that the porch can project 25% of the required yard, which obviously depends on the yard size, but there's some variation in other communities' regulations. In terms of Quincy Street and Burlington, if, I intend to provide data to the commission on those during the August 23 meeting. I wasn't able to pull that information for this meeting, but if that's still an area of desire, I'm willing to provide that information for you at the next meeting. And then just moving on to potential code changes, if allowing properties in the subject area to add a five-foot wide front porch could be an acceptable amendment to the zoning code, there are several options to do that, and I provided information, or provided a starting point for the discussion of the commission, which would be to allow new unenclosed five-foot wide porches on single-family and two-family homes on Groveland, Kimbark, Lincoln, Forest and Pine, to be located within 20 feet of the property line, as long as there's a minimum separation of a certain distance between the front porch and the nearest edge of the sidewalk, and that any stairs attached to the porch don't extend further toward the sidewalk than a certain distance. And I didn't include the distance because I am interested in what the commission thinks is an appropriate distance, based, it's about, on the research and then your feeling. So that's what I have for my update, and I'd be very interested to hear your questions and thoughts about what, how we can move forward with this, and if you'd like the additional information about Quincy and Burlington.
I had a clarifying question.
Yes.
For my own knowledge.
Sure.
When we're talking about the distance of the property line and closest edge of the sidewalk, that, if there is a space between those, that would be parkway space? Is that a?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep, that's village-owned.
Great. Thank you.
My initial thought is, with the, sorry, with the potential code, I would rather stick with the distance being measured to the property line, rather than looking at the sidewalk, and that's for two reasons. One, the sidewalk, it could, not likely, be moved in some future village improvement. Number two, and this is the bigger issue, we've had problems in the past where residents have built things between the property line and the sidewalk, and it's caused some good consternation, and I would rather not have anything in the code that even suggests that there are, there's a gray zone.
I would like to consider applying it to R3 rather than listing streets. Most of the streets, most of the R3 in the village is covered by the streets that we're listing. There's really very little other R3 to speak of. So there's a little bit down south by Ogden, like, right on Ogden, on Burlington, and then along Harlem. So I'd prefer to consider it by zoning area rather than address or street.
Okay.
And to Commissioner Marhol's point, I'm, we could consider both, a minimum distance to the property line and a minimum distance to the sidewalk. So minimum distance to the property line, but not closer than whatever to the sidewalk. Because there are some cases where they're almost the same, right? There's zero distance, and so I think we want to keep, have a minimum distance from the sidewalk, just to preserve some openness.
Okay.
I'll add that I am also very much in favor of doing this for the R3 district rather than calling out specific properties.
I think that's very supportive.
I agree with that also. And I like the idea. I think so, a few comments would be, right now, the code prevents the porch to encroach so that there's less than 20 feet in the front yard setback between the foundation of the existing house and the front street lot line. And since you're looking for ideas for the distance, I looked at the different properties, which is extremely useful that you wrote all that down with all the exact measurements, and I think there's a couple of things we could do. I think we could use, allow, what I'll just call, for purposes of discussion here, a buffer of 10 feet, or we could 12 feet, or we could do 15 feet. And if you look at the table that Planner Siren provided, you can kind of see what that means. I think if we do the 10 feet, I think there's those three properties that clearly, three or four that clearly would never be able to have a front porch.
Commissioner Miller, are you referencing the property line or the sidewalk?
The street lot line, yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Right. Yeah, I'm agreeing with, we just used that. I had asked Planner Siren to add that distance between the street lot line and the sidewalks, just so that we could have a sense, and the village board could have a sense of sort of visually, what's the effect of additional space we're talking about, because it provides a nice additional visual addition there. It's between two and, you know, 11 feet in some instances. So 10 feet, or 12 feet, or 15 feet. And then we look at the issue of the eaves of the front porch. So if we're going to allow up to two feet of the eaves of our front porch, then to me, it makes sense to either choose the 12-foot or the 15-foot option for a buffer. Then you have the, for the front of the front porch, which is the way the current code reads, you measure it to the front facing of the, of the front porch. So then you, if someone had two-foot eaves, obviously, and you had a 12-foot limit, then the eaves, if someone chose to use them and extend them two feet, that would still be a 10-foot buffer. And if you use the 15-foot measurement, it would be a 13-foot buffer. So the way I looked at it, and unfortunately, my eyes are failing a little bit here, so three properties really couldn't, under no circumstances, ever have a porch. If we use the 12-foot buffer, you only go to four or five properties that could not have a front porch, although, and then if you go to 15, there's only one more property that is knocked out of consideration, and that happens to be 95 Groveland Avenue, which is the property that came before us, that started this whole discussion. That doesn't mean that he couldn't still apply for variance in front of us. So personally, I favor probably the 12-foot with an allowance of two feet for eaves. And just to note, right now, there are two properties that could put on five-foot front porches under the code right now. They're both on Kimbark. So we're really only talking about 15 properties here in the R3 district, which are these properties. And again, three of them could not put on a porch under any circumstances, so we're, because they're so close, they're like two to three or five feet close to the front property line. So that's what we're dealing with here. And one other thing I think maybe we should discuss a little bit at some point, or the board should discuss, is this idea of porch, because once again, if we turn to the petitioner that came before us, what he was proposing did not have a roof on it. And do we want to continue requiring porches only, unenclosed porches only, which have roofs over them? I think that's relevant. And then there was one last comment I wanted to make, was that I know that it seems like it's the five-foot depth that we were talking about all the time. It seems to me I would be okay with making it five and a half feet or six feet to the front, because I think five feet is very tight, particularly if you're talking about the walking area that someone has, as opposed to when you build one of these porches, you're going to have some amount of inches accommodating the front, the front wall of the porch. So that's all I have.
For what it's worth, I did do, looking at other codes for definitions of front porches. I wasn't able to find any in my search. And I had, as I've driven through the village, tried to find a front porch without a roof, and I did not see one. That doesn't mean they're, they're not out there, but I think that does support the existing definition that we have, that a front porch does have a roof on it typically.
Personally, my opinion is that we should be requiring traditional porches with a roof, and then if someone had a compelling design reason to come before us and say, "I don't want a roof," we could consider that.
I, it becomes a variation request at that point. I would prefer to keep the definition we have right now, which, single-story roofed structure, that's pretty clear, it has roof. Deck is also defined, and it's something that does not have a roof or walls, so as much as people want to take liberties with the definitions, I think there's a fairly clear divide between when you present something, it's either a porch or it's not, and that roof structure is a defining feature. On five versus five and a half versus six, I would rather, since five is consistent with some of the other villages, I'd rather stay there, and hear some really compelling reasons from a designer why they can't, why they are somehow inconvenienced by that measurement. An inconvenienced is not a strong enough word.
If no one else is going to say anything to comment on what Commissioner Marhol just said, I wanted to note that the current allowance for unenclosed porches allows unenclosed porches up to nine feet in depth, plus three feet for eaves, which seems very generous to me. So what we'd be doing here would be allowing in areas of, where the front yard, or the front setback, whatever it's called, is under 25 feet, they can only have a five-foot front porch.
So if you have a big yard, you can have nine feet. If you have a small yard, you can only have five feet. That seems like a bit of a discrepancy to me, because obviously, maybe those houses that have the big setbacks are very big, and so balance-wise, design-wise, up to nine feet seems appropriate, but I would just rather.
I think it is a discrepancy. I think it's a fair discrepancy, and this gets back to some commentary I've made in the past about, I'm not sure that I want, I am going to support the idea that oddly-shaped lots or being limited by the shape of the property is solely a justification for variation. The variability in the village is actually one of the appealing portion, parts of town that we don't have, cookie cutter-ness, shall I call it. I understand where you're coming from. I don't know that, I think shape and depth and width are all of an existing property, they are constraints. I think they are, it is an acceptable way to define some of our own rules. I mean, we define impervious area as a percentage of the property. I don't think we have a minimum allowable area that can be impervious, say a small lot versus a large lot. We don't just say 5,000 square feet is automatically allowed to be impervious, depending on the size of your lot. We say that it's 40%. I'm throwing numbers out because I can't remember the exact, but the point is, is that we often measure things on the basis of the existing lot and don't take too much consideration for lot size as we apply those, those global rules.
The issue here is not so much, the depth, is it width or depth? I'm sorry, this is why I'm not talking too much, because I have difficulty with geometry. The width of the porch itself, it's, it's a percentage of the yard that it takes up, the percentage of the front yard. So, and we do reference that in the, in the current zoning code, you know, where an existing street yard is less than 35, or less than 36 feet, the new unenclosed porch excluding eaves may not extend more than 25% into the existing street yard. Because I think, in, you know, thinking about that, and that's why I'm waiting to see what everyone else says, because I'm having trouble grasping some of this stuff, but five feet is not a lot, right? With, if you put a chair, you know, right, if here's your house, and here's your chair, if I put my feet on, I'm, right now, I'm at five feet, and I'm not particularly tall. So I could see allowing a little more. I mean, and just, and percentage-wise, might be the best approach, but I would leave that to people who are better at math tonight to sort something out, or just extend it, say, like, seven feet or something like that. I mean, maybe nine is too much for some of these homes, but then also, they're going to be circumscribed by the location of the front porch anyway, so there may be scenarios where, hey, you know what, it's five feet, that's all you can do, right? That's, that's all you can get. But if they have the option to go more, I think they, I think people should be allowed to, it just seems to make, it seems a little more fair. I'm not sure how many would be in that box, though, without doing more calculations.
No, go on, sorry.
No, I'm, I'm.
We actually give nine feet as a maximum, and then if your street yard is less than 36, then that nine-foot distance gets shrunk down.
Right, right.
So we actually already have a sliding scale, as it were. Because if you had a street yard that was, say, 30 feet, then we would only allow you 25% of that. 25%, what is, 25% of 30? I can't do the, I can't, I'm not going to do math on my head right now, because I'm going to get it wrong.
It's at 7.5.
So it would go to 7.5.
7.5 or something like that.
Compromise on, say, six feet, max.
I mean, I guess I'm thinking if we could, the percentage seems to make sense to me too, though, but six feet, that extra foot would mean, would mean something. Although, I just keep coming back to, like, I mean, are there homes in the R3 that could have a, you know, a porch larger than 6? have a, you know, a porch larger than six feet without extending more than 25% into the existing street yard? I mean, and if there are, I think they should be allowed to, I just can't.
There are those two.
There's two, so we're, we're talking about two?
Actually, you get into, if you look at the list, and this is going back to where Commissioner Miller was, 100 Kimbark and 92 Kimbark, and 93 Lincoln would all get closer to that seven-and-a-half-foot mark that we just spoke about.
So, maybe we need to do some kind of a line drawing, like if your front yard is under 24 feet, or 23 and a half feet, or something like that, because I do, as opposed to percentages. Because the thing with percentages, I think, is at some point, very quickly, you have to cut off that, where that percentage applies, because if we were to allow everyone to have a five-foot porch, a lot of these that we can see so clearly in this table are like 16, 17 feet, so they couldn't do a percentage of 25%.
That's why we get the five-foot.
Yeah, so you could do a percentage or five feet, I guess. I guess you could do something like that. Well, and the other thing I did want to comment on is, I wrote down a little proposed text, but one of the other things is, I think if we're going down to, say, whatever it is, a 12-foot buffer, or 10-foot buffer, it, the ordinance should not allow the addition, then, of steps that go into that buffer. The buffer should be solid, whether it's steps, or a porch, or whatever. So, if someone has to put steps somewhere else, going off to the side, then they would just have to do that.
Commissioner Miller, were you, in your original statement, saying that you felt that there should be a 10- or 12-foot minimum street setback regardless of the depth of whatever porch you may or may not be able to put on your home? Is that the idea with this?
Yes, yes. So, that in some instances, you couldn't put the porch on because you could not meet that 10 or 12?
Unless you applied for a variation, or granted a variation.
Yes, then you could always do the variation, sure.
Okay.
But we're only talking, again, about four or five homes.
Sure.
So, this would give the potential for relief to, I don't know, 13, 14, 15 homes in the R3. And I think that's, I mean, I'm in favor of that.
So, would it be simpler in that case to say, if the commission is resolved, that they, that 12 feet, for example, is the idea, there should be 12 feet without a variation, no matter what, that it would just be easier to say, for lots, I guess you'd have to back up into the code and say, for lots that cannot, or, I'm just, sorry, I'm just trying to think on the fly here, and basically use, my idea is basically use that 10 or 12 feet as the starting point, and then kind of back in how you write the code to say that, that no matter what, if you've got, you have to have 10 or 12 feet in the front yard setback, and then, you know, because you're going to have a variation on the size of the porch, not necessarily say, because some of these properties could have a wider-than-five-foot porch, and maintain that 12-foot, 10- or 12-foot front yard, if that makes sense.
Right.
So, not necessarily limit folks to a five-foot wide porch, if they have, if they can do seven, and still maintain that 10- or 12-foot front yard.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know what everyone else thinks about that, because I'm a little, personally, I'm a little hesitant to say, oh, well, you've got, if you have 12-foot buffer, you've got another 12 feet, so you could put a 12-foot wide front porch, or a nine-foot wide front porch, if your house is small, and scale-wise, that could be excessive, you know what I mean?
It could be percentage-wise, but, but in no case shall be less than 12 feet, so that you have some of that variability that we discussed?
Yeah.
I like the idea of incorporating the percentage into it to make, because I do think it should be relative to the size of the yard, the size of the house, the size of the lot. I think that makes sense, but saying you can have at least five feet, and then, I also like the idea of having that 10-foot to the eaves, 12-foot to the porch, that, in this zoning district, that seems like that would make sense to me, and it's pretty simple, again, without the stair encroachment.
In our encroachment table right now, you can have two, eaves be up to two feet encroaching into a yard, so I was kind of thinking, don't even mention the eaves, but just allow that table to apply to these eaves.
Okay.
And honestly, I don't know why the board years ago used a three-foot eave, because it's not consistent with, you know, what's in our code, which allows homes to have eaves of up to two feet, but not three feet, so.
They seem to be sort of coalescing around some code language here. Given that, do we still want staff to do the house-by-house analysis on, on the other streets as well? Or are we comfortable enough with this that we could move ahead to a proposed text amendment?
If we've settled on R3, then I think we don't need more staff research.
I agree with that. It's just an R3 thing right now.
Okay. All right. Okay. Does that give you a direction?
If we could hone in on just a few standards, and then discuss whether you would like to make a recommendation to the Village Board, or if you'd like me to come back with some proposed language that we can refine before taking that to the Village Board, you know, whichever your preference is. But what I heard was, there's definitely a preference of using, or it seems to me there was a preference for using the property line as the measurement, not the sidewalk, that there should be a minimum distance that is maintained regardless of what percentage works out in terms of the size of the porch and the type of the, sorry, I lost my train of thought, but there should be a minimum no-build zone for every lot, and that should be, did you hear 10 feet? And I know Commissioner Miller suggested a couple different distances. Is there a consensus on the distance?
It was 10-foot to the eave and then 12-foot.
Or 12-foot. So, if we don't consider eaves, I think.
Is that from the sidewalk?
That would be from the property line.
From the property, I know that, okay.
So, in some cases, that would end up being effectively 12 feet, in some cases, be 15, maybe a little bit bigger, in terms of visual.
Okay.
And that, that allowance for 12 feet does not include a further encroachment of stairs, that if you have stairs, you either need to have them on the side, or you need to integrate them into the design of the porch.
Okay.
But in any case, the allowance should be five-feet depth, I'm going to call it depth, but five-feet depth from the front of the house forward to allow for a portion, does that include the structure on the front of the porch? Does that include the entire porch, is it five and a half or six feet to allow for the wall?
Can you, I'm not sure, what were you asking?
I'm sorry. I was just trying to nail down the, the depth of the porch that's desired. So, from the front of the house towards the street, you've got maybe five feet for movement, and then another six feet or additional for columns, railings, things like that. Is there a desire to make it five feet all included, or allow additional room for structure?
I mean, my preference was maybe five and a half or six feet, but I think Commissioner Marvul did not agree with that.
I was on five, you were five and a half to six, John was six, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah, I think it needs to be more than five, it was five to fi, I think six is, I think it's got to be at least six, but is there any way to do it percentage-wise? Does it make, make language?
I can try.
I mean, because that's what we have now.
I can take a look at it.
In this other.
Oh, sure.
You know, so it would read like, and we could limit it, you know, blah, 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 new unenclosed porches in the R3 district shall be allowed to encroach up to six-feet minima, or six-feet maximum into required street yard. When existence street yard is, oh, let's say, that's a difference, okay, never mind.
Wouldn't we want to say a percentage of the yard, but max, not maximum, maximum six feet, or up to?
I don't want to restrict them to six feet if.
If they have room to do something.
If they have room to do something more, right.
Well, it's, it's.
Well, perhaps we could.
The percentage could, it could be very similar to what the existing language is, because it says nine, and then it goes to the percentage, but then says, I think you can use some of the, sorry, I am going to say, write it, write it a draft, but use the language that we already have in the existing code, and refine it specifically for six-feet max, or, sorry, six-feet at kind of that outside. You can allow a percentage if it's possible to fit it in. I know I'm not being super helpful here, but I think there's enough there in the existing zoning code for other, the more liberal areas to work with.
What the existing code says is, it says where an existing street yard is less than 36 feet, however, blah, blah, blah. Perhaps we could add another, where an existing street yard is less than 25 feet or 24 feet, then you can use this calculation.
Yeah.
Maybe that would be a workable way to do it.
It seems like 25 feet might be the, just looking at some of the numbers here on the table.
Yeah. Plus, if it was over 25, or if it's, you know, there's that, those couple that could have a larger street yard, like, well, the one that's at 24.3, 92 Kimbark, their, their distance to their street lot line is 24.3. So, since they're under 36 feet, they could have, well, they couldn't have a five-foot, because it would be under 20, 20.
Right, and that's why we're writing this specifically for R3.
But the other one, the, the one other was 25.6, they could have a five-and-a-half foot. Yes, if they were to have a six-foot, if they were to be seven-foot.
They would get six and change.
Yeah. If they had 25%, if we eliminate that under 25, right, okay.
Okay.
That under 20-foot limit that we have currently.
Okay.
They could perhaps have something.
Let me run some numbers. I might come to you with a few different options.
Sure.
And see what you like, and then I'm hoping that we can take, and the other thing I want to do is present to you, I know, I shouldn't say that, I feel very strongly that the properties on R3, from previously looking at them when we discussed this, I believe those are multifamily properties. This would apply to single-family, I believe is the desire, single-family, two-family. So, for the properties, and I do not remember what I looked at, in R3 and Ogden, I think from memory, if memory serves, those are also, zoom in here, those are also multifamily buildings.
I think those are all multifamily.
Yeah, so. I'll just double-check that, and make sure we don't have any outliers. If there are, I'll bring those to your attention. So, what I'll do is come back with art, refined information about the R3, and a few different options for distances, and then I'll call it a couple of examples, examples that might be a little bit tight, and then some that are more moderate, and show you kind of what the measurements are for those, if that's acceptable for the next meeting.
Quick clarification, I'm just.
Sure, I'm following everything. The R3 area would supersede H9 part of the code here. It would, it, just because it doesn't seem like it applies to anything for the 36 feet in the examples, it would just be, R3 for all examples supersedes this part, or if nine is, H9 is not met, then, and you're in R3, look at this new addendum, or this new change that we're discussing.
My initial reaction would be to keep it within the section nine, and to say, for those properties that are within the R3 district, for those single and two-family properties within the R3 district that meet these certain requirements, but I'd want to write some things out and see how they look, you know?
Yes.
Before committing to how the format would be.
And I was slightly in error, there is R3 on Burlington between Herbert and Della Plant, north side of the street.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
No, it's all.
I was looking at that earlier in the meeting and forgot to mention that.
I, can you, that's the only other one that I, that we think, if I may channel Teresa here, that's the only other one that appears to be single-family in R3, or typically single-family residences located in an R3 district. The other R3 is along Harlem, we believe that's all multifamily, and then the other R3 is, like you said, on Ogden, and I'm pretty certain that's all our, multi as well.
And I believe those lots, just visually, are a little bit shallower than the lots that we've been looking at. So, I'll be interested to see what the setbacks are on those.
The ones on Burlington, definitely, and actually on Harlem, they're actually wider. I know the setbacks are pretty good.
So, that'll be interesting for the analysis.
And I can't speak to, because I can't remember.
Is there any desire, I'm not trying to open a can of worms, but is there any desire to look at R2? And just for those who don't have a zoning map pulled up in front of them, that would include properties on East Quincy, not all properties, but properties that back up to the railroad tracks on East Quincy, for the most part, and then some.
On Burlington.
On Burlington. But I think those are generally single-family, not deep lots.
It's very mixed. There's a lot of, there's a mix of multifamily or duplexes and single-family through there. I don't think you can conclusively say it's composed of majority one or the other.
But I think there are a few stretches, a lot of stretches, where there's a lot of single-family homes, as I recall, from walking the dog through there, and my recollection is that a lot of those front yards are, they tend to be more uniformly something at like at least 20 feet. They're not super shallow, like maybe 95 Groveland was, maybe more than 20, 25, and they seem more uniform. I think, to me, there's an interest in looking at those two, to treat them similarly.
There is a stretch up, there's a Northgate Court stretch of R2, also up near 26th Street.
My answer is just hammer out R3 first, and then go back.
Okay.
And just see what we come up with, because I think, you know, I think it's going to be, I'm looking forward to seeing what you produce.
I'm trying to avoid mission creep, but I, you know, you look at it.
Yeah.
All right.
Instead of leaving a formula, we can apply the same formula.
Sure.
You know, within the parameters of the particular district, so I think where Zingar two might be a little bit, you know, different, it's got a few more, you know, idiosyncrasies.
Sure.
More John's comment. Can you stick with R3 and do the staff analysis of that area along Burlington and see where we're at?
Sure. Okay. I think I'm very clear about what I need to bring back to you in August. Appreciate, appreciate your patience.
Great. Any, any further comments? All right. We don't appear to have any additional information, which takes us to adjournments. Our next regular meeting will be on August 23rd. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.